It is six thirty and everyone stand to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Dryer, do you call the roll? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
There are no amendments or additions to tonight's council meeting agenda. Agenda will stand as presented. Is there a motion to approve council meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-four?
Approve minutes from September ninth.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Are approved. Moving into our reports. Just giving it another add in there that we have our October breast cancer awareness store open through October fourth to raise money for breast cancer research. Make sure you go online today to make your donation and get some Plain City apparel. I really appreciate Main Street Treasurers helping to set this up and I know some members in our community that could use our support to show that we are with them through their journey. So just wanted to give that additional add. We also have the Battle of the Cans happening September thirtieth through October fourth. This is a venture through the school district. So we have the big Jonathan Alder London game coming up October fourth. The schools wanted to get more involved with that rivalry and have a food drive that will be taking place at the schools. But I know we will have bins out here at the municipal building to collect. So if there's residents that do not have any school age children, they can drop off their donations. For our area, we have Hope's Lantern that we'll be focusing on. So like granola bars, applesauce containers, things that are shelf stable that can be sent home with kids on the weekends, ramen noodles, mac and cheese, different things that can go into their backpack, into backpack meals. Same with London, they are doing that as well. So it's being tallied through Bridges of Madison County is the organization. To reiterate this. Challenge, thank you. Back to the communities. Last year we won the food drive. So I'd really like to see Plain City win the food drive on this one. I can't, we can't control the football team, so. So look for that being posted later. And then Mr. Hutchinson and I attended the community, I think it's called the Community Action Team for Jonathan Alder, or they're calling it the CAT Team. And this is the next group that is going to be deciding what we do with our current buildings for the Jonathan Alder School District. Do we build a new high school? Do we expand to three elementaries? Like taking all the facts, everything that's been presented thus far and looking at the future of the school district. So I'm a part of that group, but then Mr. Hutchinson, he spoke on the development of our area and how that coincides with the school district and that we are working very closely together to make sure that we're all on the same page for the Village of Plain City to the school district. Last week, I, as a Madison County Chamber Board member, I volunteered at the Farm Science Review in their pop booth. That was always a good time to see that event. And I also want to thank our staff members. So I know we have Chief McKee and Ms. Granger in the audience for helping to give a tour of our village municipality to over sixty Plain City homeschool students. Last Wednesday, they toured the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department and the municipal building side. So just want to appreciate all their efforts of helping to educate that many students about local government. And then I wrapped up my last couple of weeks with volunteering at Kane Middle School for their Unity Day. The students, and Mr. Harriman was there as well. They participated in a day long of team building activities, which was neat to see how the students ages are for fifth grade and sixth grade work together to complete their challenges. So I thought it was a pretty good, a good, long day, a long hot day, but great to hear what the future leaders of the community, how they can get things done. So. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Sonnet for Village Administrator and Finance Director update.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, we've been invited to attend a board of election meeting this Wednesday. Not sure if that would all entail, but I know Justin's going to attend on behalf of the village chief. Have you decided if you're going to go or not? Not sure.
I'm not going to, yeah, myself, I'm going to attend. It's a table, it's a tabletop exercise.
Yeah, we're not sure exactly.
In case something happens at the election board or the voting places for the election.
We don't, we don't, not controlling the voting locations, so I'm not sure.
No, it was just in case something happened, is there a plan to, when other swallow stuff and having to work?
We are looking with the contractor for the depot, hopefully work will begin on Wednesday. And then depend upon what the client, who we're thinking on Wednesday, we should know more about additional cost change orders. Just not a hundred percent sure yet. The budget amendment is on tonight's agenda. And we are, the staff is reviewing the RFPs for the bicentennial intersection improvements there. So that's all.
Sonnet, Chief McKee?
The only thing I have, Mayor, is that Cadet Fritz is still scheduled to, he's passed all his physical agility tests and stuff. Still got his written exam. And still, everything is well, which I'm sure will, he's probably going to be sworn at the next council meeting. At the title of the agenda or at just the title of the agenda. For Mayor to swear him in and then he'll actually start at fifteen.
Okay. When does it, when's the graduation and everything?
October eleventh.
October eleventh, okay, wonderful. I saw that email come through. That's exciting. I know, I'm sure he's excited to get started.
Yeah, it seems like a long time for us, I'm sure it's a very long time for them.
Yes.
Plus, Chief, we got seven more days for the picture contest.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So. We're getting smoked now.
Yeah.
How, how far, like a thousand people?
Like two thousand.
Oh, two thousand?
Like two thousand now.
Is there a way we can put it out on the app? Yeah, is there a way to put it on the app? Advertise it? I don't know. I think it's a great community rallying point.
Do newspaper or something, put it in there.
Let's see, the article would go Wednesday and voting's then on Monday?
Yeah, so hopefully there's some last minute advice.
So we all just need to post and keep sharing?
You can vote every day too.
Well, I voted many times.
Oh, I didn't even think about.
Yeah, not saying to vote.
Okay, well, I, that's, we will, yes, keep, well, it's a great picture. If there's a way that we can mass share it out.
End of month, thirty.
To everybody, it's a good club.
Through the thirtieth, thank you, thirtieth.
Yes. I just keep forgetting if I vote, like at what time I vote and then like a day goes by, so.
Last I looked, we had like eight thousand votes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
I guess I did mine at like midnight because I tried to log on today.
And you got, you got a little back in at midnight.
Got to wait, so.
All right. Thank you, Chief McKee, Council President.
Our work session is October second. I will probably reach out to Mr. Dryer and Ms. Sonnet with some topics and discussion maybe Friday or chat.
I, I will not be there at the work session that's the Madison County four H Awards. So I wanted to put that out there that.
I will be out also.
Anyone else?
I should be back, it's going to be tight on time, but should be.
I will be talking to Mr. Dryer and Ms. Sonnet about the ability to cancel the D word.
I would feel probably seven would be better on time than six thirty, but.
With, with multiple absences, I usually would prefer just to go longer on the following Monday and put more on the meeting and have more participation. Because I hate to have a discussion where, you know, we didn't get what we want. So if we just, if everyone just, it will talk, but if that many people are going to miss, I would first would prefer to move it and just say, hey, Monday's going to be.
Fourteenth, the fourteenth is our meeting, so be it the next, the following Monday. No.
I'll be there at fourteen.
Because that would be the second, that would be the second.
There will be an email that goes out asking for everyone's future travel plans after this meeting tonight.
So Mr. Terry is saying like, let's hurry the meeting.
Maybe don't say that we're certainly having on the second.
Fourteenth, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Lafayette? All right. Economic Development Committee, Ferguson?
Not have a September meeting. I did just find my email. The next meeting will be November the nineteenth at eleven AM. We're doing every other month.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. BZA?
We had no September meeting and we have no October.
Let me get on that committee.
You brought that committee.
We don't have any of these committees.
Planning and Zoning Commission, we had to move hours to September, this coming Monday, September thirtieth at five thirty PM due to lack of quorum. And the final development plan, Madison Meadows, the apart condos. So we'll be hearing that. Parks and Recreation Committee, Sense?
We also did not have a meeting, however, I saw an update. But as you know, on the, on our agenda tonight, we've got a couple of parks related offices that we're going to be talking about and voting on. We have events that are coming up. Wolves one oh one event is Saturday at ten AM at Pastime Park. And that's going to be a live wolf and hands on activities, like feeding, feeding the wolf. No, I'm kidding. And that is free to the community. Trailhead Project on one sixty-one is underway. Night, last sun, or last night, which was Sunday night, was last music in the park for the twenty twenty-four season. And we have two that's left for the season. This coming Thursday and then Thursday ten three. If you haven't made it out, come on. Re-commissioned Tuesday, September fourth. Next month on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sen. Personnel and Finance CIP Committee, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting this Thursday, here at six thirty. I have no update.
Okay.
All right. We're good.
Thank you for that update. Fireboard?
Our meeting is set for Thursday, October.
Plain City Area Development Corporation? PCBA, Union Chamber? Is there anything on PCBA?
No, other than Mr. Stanford is the speaker for this one. This one, Mr. Stanford will be speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. I know, I can't believe that this is like the last week of September. It does not feel like it. Okay, moving into our discussion items, we have stormwater utility fee program. So Mr. Van Tolberg, you're on the, you are up.
On the hotspot.
You're on the hotspot.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I've been talking to Haley and staff about stormwater utility for it feels like probably a year. Let me ask, since small crowd, do you guys know what a stormwater utility fee is? And if anybody doesn't, let me know.
I could either refer.
Okay. I read about it, but. Okay. So I'll do just a brief kind of description of what we're running that. So stormwater utility, similar to water surfer fees, right? They're a utility. You're using the water, you're sending the wastewater to be treated. You pay a fee for that to happen, just like electric, anything else. Well, the theory with stormwater is obviously we don't control rain, but rain falls on your property. You've got rooftops, you've got impervious surfaces, that's running off into the streets. And then the village is expected to take that stormwater and manage it. So it doesn't flood, doesn't impact the streams. More and more regulations coming with, especially with the Darby. We need to have those mechanisms in place to be able to handle that. So a stormwater utility, if we put that in properly, that allows that, allows you to collect a fee and have that money on hand to take care of catch basins, pipes, curbs and gutters, the ditches, detention basins, maintain those, operate, maintain, reconstruct as necessary and build new ones where you need to build, build the new ones. Again, I touched on a little bit, but why, obviously you got to maintain it. You don't want flooding, but you also have more regulation coming down from Ohio EPA, federal regulations that are coming along as well. You got to maintain those just like you do your roads. So right now it comes out of the general fund. And it's just ad hoc. If something needs fixed, Ryan and his crew goes out and fixes it. And sometimes that fix works, sometimes it doesn't, and then you're just chasing it. Right, so this gives, you know, a chance to have a tactical look at that and come up with good methods to fix that. How do we do that? You know, you're, basically you are, you're imposing this charge or this fee on residents and commercial businesses, you know, all the like, but you're doing it based on impervious area. So you take a, you know, take the average of your single family residences in the village and we come up with what is considered an ERU, which is an equivalent residential unit. That's roughly going to be somewhere around twenty-six hundred square feet of impervious area on the average resident. We'll take that to the commercial properties, extrapolate that out. Obviously, if you're looking at this facility here, there's a lot of pavement, there's a lot of rooftop. It's not same as a house. So we take that twenty-six hundred and fifty square feet. We look at aerial maps, we draw a line, we say, okay, this property gets ten, twenty, thirty ERUs equivalent. Those, those charges can then be put on the, put on typically in a lot of communities where they've got water and sewer, it just tags on to the monthly utility fee. We don't have water and sewer here, since that's been turned over to Mid-Ohio, but there is quarterly billing for, for the trash service. And so we can piggyback on that and, and I would recommend we do a quarterly billing. So they'll get that bill four times a year. So that's kind of the synopsis of what a stormwater utility is and how it works. So what we've been doing over the last handful of months, we kind of started taking this, you know, one step at a time. First step was determine what that equivalent residential unit was. We did a GIS, you know, we used GIS aerial mapping. We did kind of what we call a heat map and kind of outlined what the impervious areas were on most of the single family residents. We didn't do every single one, but we did a pretty, pretty reasonable snapshot. And we determined that the equivalent residential unit is twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. And again, we rounded it off because it just makes sense. Second task then was we, we looked at all properties that are not residential, not single family residential. I say that because we consider apartments to be a commercial property. So non-residential property evaluation, we looked at every property, again, same methodology. Went through, went through that heat map, looked at all the impervious areas. We've calculated out what, what those are for commercial businesses. What we list as commercial residences, we found out that there are some that are, look like single family houses, but they're actually a commercial business now. And then we've got the multifamily apartment complex, couple of apartment complexes that we treated as a commercial business. We looked at triplexes, duplexes. We've looked at some of those where we know that there's maybe two units. Instead of treating those as a commercial apartment, we treated those as like a half of an ERU if there was a duplex. Triplexes, we're looking at maybe doing a one and a half for the building. So each unit would still be a half. With that, we went through all those scenarios and, you know, the, the third task was basically take all that data, accumulate it, how many equivalent residential units do we have in the village? We've got two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four is the number we're at right now. There's a couple of things we want to verify on it, but we're going to be right around that number. So the next piece then was we've been helping with the capital improvement budget and the, the budget for this next year. And with that, we're trying to set out a five-year plan for storm, storm improvements in the village. And we've run, we've got a few projects identified and what we try to do is spread those out over the next five years. We've looked at it a couple of different ways. Basically talking to Haley and Ryan and saying, okay, what do you think the priority is? And we laid it out, that was the first scenario we laid out. And if you, basically what we started out with in two thousand twenty-five is the Shepherd and Congress improvements, which hopefully we get funded through OPWC, but we would still have to have match money. So this would help with that match money. And that would be five hundred and ninety thousand dollars spent in twenty twenty-five on that project. We've got bicentennial park listed in here with some of the storm improvements. We've got Spalming Avenue, West Second Street, storm sewer improvements, Carlisle Avenue, Chillicothe Street. And what I've done is broken Chillicothe Street into three phases because it's such a large project. But if you look at the, the way those funds would be dispersed, it kind of goes up and down and all over the place. We thought, well, what if we graduated this a little bit, started with the smaller projects and build it out over those five years as we hopefully collect more funds through this if we go, go down the road of putting in the stormwater utility. So the second scenario, we laid it out that way, just kind of adjusting the way we spent those funds. Met with staff last week, talked to Ryan a little bit about how much spends in just typical maintenance in a year. And it doesn't necessarily, hasn't been necessarily tracking it, but best guess is probably around twenty thousand dollars just to go out and fix the catch basin here, fix one there, maybe patch, do a patch on a storm sewer somewhere. So I tried to capture that, we're trying to capture that in there. And then we've also talked about some of the debt service on previous projects that had storm sewers that maybe we need to capture in here as well. So all those things will factor into the cost of the storm sewer utility. Our next, you know, our next steps is really to start drafting the legislation. If we decide to do this, we'd be drafting the legislation, which would also then set that rate. We are working on doing an evaluation basically of surrounding communities. What's, what's a reasonable rate for Plain City comparative to, let's say Hilliard or London or Dublin or Marysville? And then also trying to find some communities that are similar size to Plain City. So we're not just comparing to cities that have thirty, forty, fifty thousand people. Let's see if we can find some communities that are around the five thousand. So we're, we're having to broaden that circle a little bit out across the state to find some more of those. And believe it or not, they're not, they don't post them on their websites all that well. So it's taking phone calls and, and doing things like that. So that's the next step. So since we finished that, we can come back and say, hey, we recommend this is the rate we would set. We can help write that draft legislation, which would basically set the rules. And then beyond that, we would start public relations help with, you know, getting some documents out that you could post on the website or send flyers or mailers out that says this is what it is. Kind of give them the, some details of what I just explained to you guys, but in, in more picture format a little bit, a little bit easier to read. It's not just a document that they're just going to read full points because most people won't read that. There is, so there are programs where you can do credits for the non-residential properties. Like if a commercial business comes in, let's say like the spot, when they build out, if they put in all their own storm infrastructure, put in detention basins, put in the water quality treatment processes that Ohio EPA needs, and they're going to keep it on their, I'll call it homeowner association, but their commercial association for maintenance. We theoretically have a credit program where we can give them a credit because we're not maintaining their system. We don't credit them a hundred percent because they're still dumping water into our system out of Jefferson Avenue. So that's the, the next step after that is kind of establishing. Once you've decided to establish it, you've got your legislation in place, then we help figure out what that credit program will look like. So that's, that's where we're at in the process. Do you guys have any questions from where we're at right now and I guess going forward?
So looking at some of the, your two fee structures on priority or just kind of smaller, bigger goal that this, you, this utility fee funds those in entirety or we're trying to offset some of that?
Well.
Because some are pretty sizable, right?
Yeah, we haven't started actually like looking at what the fees would be necessarily. But if you look at this, I mean, even the first year, it's a five hundred and ninety thousand dollar project in twenty twenty-five. So even if you had a whole year's worth of collecting on a stormwater utility, you get two thousand seven hundred ERUs. So do the math on that, that's a lot of money charged into a resident. So you're not going to fund them. Point is, you're not going to fund these wholly. This is going to be seed money for projects. It's going to hopefully fund the operation of maintenance and hopefully fund the debt service. And then whatever's left becomes seed money for grants or other opportunities to pair up and match these projects.
Just kind of establishing a, a long-term program that would help. I mean, we're, we're behind in our maintenance, right? That, that's what that's showing me, those four or five projects that are listed there, like those need done and we're behind in those. So if we.
And there's, there's more than that.
Yeah.
These were the ones that are identified as like, hey, these are, these are actual problems now.
Yeah.
So let's get them into the, let's get them in. But there's other ones that are, you know, maybe on streets that don't impact as many, Chillicothe Street impacts the whole town, right? That's one that's, needs to get done. Some of these others, they might be on some side streets, but they are major impacts to people. And so those are, those are how we've identified those projects. But there's, there's still other stormwater. And not to mention, this also helps, even though we don't own the sewer anymore, it still helps with the ion high problems, which eventually gets you more capacity at the plant, which allows for them to open up more capacity. So by putting in better storm systems, you take that stormwater out of the sanitary sewer.
Now, you know, as a municipality, just thinking as we grow to the five thousand plus, is there, are there general regulations to have like stormwater plans, stormwater stuff in place being a larger city versus a small village? You know, just kind of as we're planning for.
Yeah, as, as we plan ahead, there are some, I want to say strict, there's just more regulations that come into place from the Ohio EPA when it comes to the NPDS, which is your discharge system, discharge pollution system, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. But you've got to put that into place as you grow, especially with the Dartford Creek. You know, right now, you know, I mean, there's no, your systems that go to the creek, there's no stormwater quality. Like they're just, the water goes into the system, goes into the pipe, goes straight to the creek. Except for Gay Street and Maple Street, which have been reconstructed in the last few years. We require those to go in, we put in a water quality. Theoretically, it's getting out the sediment and taking out some of the oils and things that come off the roads. Those are the only two in the whole town that release in the Dartford Creek that have water quality on them, unless it's new development that a developer's built in the last few years. Those are things that we're still not addressing within these projects. Other than Chillicothe Street, we'll do the same thing we did with Gay Street. But these projects are just to fix the flooding and other issues that are in town. So those are things that are coming that you're going to have to continue to, to work on.
As, as new developments, get these mitigation things into their development, do the same rates apply for the residents that are in those homes in those?
If they are, so yes, because in most of those cases, their systems, their detention basins are still coming to the village under, under easement. They're not being maintained by, they, typically what's happening, the, the homeowners association is maintaining the, they're mowing it. They're not being maintained by, they, typically what's happening, the homeowners association is maintaining the, they're mowing it. They're doing the landscaping around it, but they're not responsible for the outlet structures and making sure that the basin still works. Once it's, you know, once it goes through its maintenance period and they're turned over.
Is there an impact fee that we can impose on, that we can put in place for development? Like, we have the roads, um water sewer, impact these parks. Is this something for stormwater?
I think that'd be a question for Paul.
That's okay. Um, can we, so how we have impact fees for everything else for future development that comes through? Can we have a stormwater impact fee as well, so that even though we have this impact fee, it'd be kind of a good governance to our current residents, be like, and we're getting an impact fee on future development as well?
I think it would be based on the ERUs for any new units that would be going in and part of the development. I don't know. Man, I don't.
One, one thing I, you know.
I don't think I've seen it as an impact fee before.
Yeah, but I think where the new developments that come on, they've got good infrastructure, they're putting in detention basins, they're putting in water quality features. Even if the whole system was coming on to the village's maintenance, you're probably not touching most of those for years. All of this, all, everything coming from the stormwater utility is funding all the things that have been neglected and ignored for years or just doesn't have a storm system in it. So we're putting storm systems into places that have never had them. So I think it's, it's really, this is, this is really for the current residents more than it is for the new residents coming into those new developments because their systems are in place.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd have to, you'd have to work a little, I mean, it's a little bit different than car traffic management issues and things that they're bringing because when a new development comes in and you have an impact fee, it's having an immediate impact on the police department, it's having an immediate impact on the roads and things of that nature. This is, again, like you said, it's all brand-new infrastructure, it's not having an immediate impact. Now, you know, we could do a study, we'd have to do a study, we'd have to figure out long-term what we would need for like a capital fund and how many years of, whether it be thirty years, and we'd have to be looking at when some of the stuff would need to be replaced or fixed or remediation.
But, but in the, but in theory, that, that stormwater utility fee still gets charged to those new residents.
Right, right, so.
Right, so.
They're paying and the.
Right.
Or they're, right, just keep building it?
Right, and then in theory, as you grow, you know, I, I would, I would say even part of our recommendation, once we do come up with whatever the fee is gonna be that we recommend, is going to be making sure that we have an annual, annual true-up into that, whether it's cost of living increase, or we can look at, it's similar to modern sewer utilities. You look at where we at, what, what's our budget look like, what are our numbers at, and should we increase this by a cost of living at a minimum? You know, you could theoretically waive that year by year if you've got a good fund, then things will look good, but I would at least make sure you have that in there as a, as a minimum standard. That every year, you're looking at that cost of living.
Yeah, I mean, it may be something more in the line of a surcharge or a levy or something like that that would go around village-wide as opposed to an impact fee, because impacts fees are very specific because they could be looked at as a tax, which they're not supposed to be, because they're supposed to be a ca- impact fees are directed to an actual cost that a particular development is causing the village. And here, they wouldn't be necessarily causing it, so we we could run into legal problems if we were to say, okay, we're gonna start charging all the new developments an impact for for stormwater discharge, and we're gonna keep that a capital fund, but we're gonna take that capital fund and use it to fix the stuff that's busted existing. That wouldn't pass muster.
Right.
But, I mean, it doesn't mean that we couldn't come up with some other mechanism to capture that so we can, so that we don't get in the situation where we are now. So we always have a capital fund available, but that would be coming up with something different, something not an impact fee.
Well, the, um, so like the first year, the five hundred ninety thousand, that would be without matching funds.
That's, that's just the cost, that's cost of the project right now, like based on our preliminary estimate.
And what's the, what's the usual OPWC? Is it like fifty-fifty?
Well, that, that is just your stormwater cost for that project. That project is what, two, two point one million? And I think we're, we've submitted for what, seven fifty?
Seven, yeah, seven hundred.
Seven hundred. So it'll be partially funded by OPWC, partially funded by Mid-Ohio for all the waterline improvements in the project, and then everything else would be village. But that five ninety is what is stormwater infrastructure of that, because we're doing roadway, water, new curbs and gutters, new sidewalks, all of that on those, those roads.
That's wonderful.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming and speaking this evening on this topic, and we'll keep it as a forefront.
From a one quick question, timeline standpoint, I know you guys had more to do, when do you think something like this would be up for?
For first reading? I mean, we probably need a month to six weeks to get it, like if it's.
Early, early calendar year, late this year, early next year, thank you.
I mean, in an ideal world, we. We'd be done the end of the year, but I know you've got to go through readings and everything else, and there might be some.
I I add a month, yeah, early, early twenty twenty-five, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving into our unfinished business, second reading ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four, rezoning fifteen point six five acres at two twenty-five Guy Avenue, two sixty-five Jefferson Street, and zero US dash forty-two parcels, number zero four dash zero zero two three zero, number zero four dash zero zero five zero three point zero zero one, and number zero four dash zero zero five zero three point zero zero two, from Community Business District B two to Plan Unit Development PUD.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty-four.
Sir.
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four passes. Second reading ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, amending the codified ordinances, chapter nine fifty-five, park and recreation facilities of part nine of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code.
Motion. It's twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, second. Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-three, twenty twenty-four passes. Moving into new business, first reading ordinance twenty-four dash twenty twenty-four, approving a supplemental appropriation of funds and amendments to the Village of Plain City twenty twenty-four budget and waiving the second reading and declaring an emergency.
Motion to waive second reading ordinance twenty-four twenty twenty-four.
Second. Mr. Herrmann?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash twenty twenty-four and declare emergency.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-four is approved. First reading resolution forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing implementing the park rules and regulations. First reading resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing the sale of impounded vehicles. Our motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, they may. Adjourn.